Madam Chair, I don't mean to interrupt. This is the court reporter. I'm on Zoom and you need unmute. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Start with our roll call. Al Quinn, present. Mark Raykraft.
Present.
Carla Childers, present. Janelle, present. Danny Manley.
Present.
David Justin.
Present.
Caroline Ross, present.
Everybody has a last name, but Janelle, she only has a first name.
Trying to state in kind of.
All righty, any additions or amendments to our today's agenda?
I have an addition to the agenda. I believe that we need to do the voting of officers, which we did not do because we did not have a meeting last month. So we need Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. So I would like to add that as part of number five or after number five.
Wonderful.
Or even before number five, however you want to do it.
Do you have support for that?
Support.
Motion by Al Quinn, supported by Mark, that we amend today's agenda to add voting of officers in 5A. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? All right, motion carried. Approval of our last meeting minutes, which was back way back in November was the last time we met. So any questions or amendments before I entertain a motion to approve those?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 10th, 2021, as written.
All right, motion by Al Quinn, supported by Janelle, that we approve the prior meeting minutes of November 10th, 2021, as printed. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? All right, motion carried. Move on to officers, Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Any nominations for Chair position?
I nominate Carla as the second Chair.
Al Quinn, supported by Caroline, that we nominate Carla Childers as our Board Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carried. Any nominations for our Vice Chair position? All right. So Mark is nominating Al Quinn.
I support.
All right, motion by Mark, supported by Janelle, that Al Quinn fills our Vice Chair position. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Right, motion carried. All righty, now we have our Secretary position. Any nominations for that?
Nominate Caroline Ross.
All right.
Who was our Secretary?
All right, motion by David, supported by Danny, that we nominate Caroline Ross as our Secretary. Favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Right, motion carried. Next, we will open it up for general public comment, and in this section, we're going to have two two different public comment portions. The first one is just general comments for the Board Commission to hear. The next one that we're going to have during our special land use permit, that's going to pertain more to the project itself. So do we have anybody that would have liked to address the Commission with just general public comments? And if so, I'd ask that you would stand at the podium and state your name and address. All right, there's no public comment. We will go ahead and.
Is there any, excuse me, Chairman, is there somebody outside?
We do have somebody up there that I believe Casey's up there.
They were assured that they would be seen on the screen, and now they are not. So.
There they are.
They're not there.
Casey, are you good with public comment?
We're good at this time for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Casey. All right, so at this time, I'll turn it over, and we will start with our statement of conflicts of interest.
Good evening. I'm Kyle O'Meara, and this is Phil Fahey. We're your legal counsel for Fahey, Scholes, Burzek, Rhodes. As you know, as Planning Commission, you're subject to a variety of different rules and regulations related to conflicts of interest. Typically, if you would have a conflict of interest related to a project, you would have to abstain from deliberating and considering a project. So, for example, there's language in the Planning Enabling Act, your bylaws in Section 2.4 very specifically define what a conflict of interest is. A large-scale project like the one we're about to discuss can result in conflicts of interest, especially with family relationships. You have a brother or sister who may stand to financially benefit or impacted by a particular project that can lead to a conflict of interest. So, given that, I have called each of you, and we have talked through various questions that relate to your bylaws as well as to other sources of authority that constitute conflicts of interest under Michigan law. It's my understanding, after asking all these questions and then performing, applying all the answers to the questions, that none of you have what I would consider a conflict of interest that would prevent you from deliberating or voting on this particular project. I'm happy to address any questions that you may have about conflicts of interest. Otherwise, I think it would be appropriate to move on to a brief overview of this particular project and the process.
All right, thank you.
Hey, great. I am Cindy Todd. I'm with Spicer Group, what, your planner? And also with me, I've got Jessica Huffnagle right behind me, and then Jenny Stewart is back there working the PowerPoint. So we're kind of all interacting, and Jenny and Jessica's taking notes as we go. I just wanted to do a quick overview of our evening, and just to tell you a little bit about just Spicer's role, just to get a good idea for you. We're working for Gracha County. We're here to assist you with your facilitation, any clarification that you have. And then it's our role to make sure that the developer follows all of the rules and reference to our ordinance. So that's that. So the purpose of our meeting this evening, oops, there we go. It's announced. So the purpose of our meeting this evening is tonight is a public hearing. It's considering issues relevant to our special land use permit application separately from issues associated with the site plan review. And we'll have a site plan review meeting after our public special land use. So that's not tonight. So tonight is all about our special land use permit application. A special land use is compatible with permitted uses but possesses characteristics or qualities that require individual review and discretion in order to avoid incompatible with the character of the surrounding area, public services, facilities, and adjacent land use. So the authority, your authority, is to review the special land use permit for a wind energy converted facility, which we're going to see as we go through, you all have a report, and I'll do the report at the very end. It's set out as an acronym as WECF. It's provided in your Chapter 16 and 16.77, double P, of the Gracha County Ordinance. For the Zoning Enabling Act, decisions on a special land use are to be incorporated in a statement of planning and conclusions relative to special land use, which specifies the basis of the decision and any conditions that are imposed. So that's just a little brief overview of the purpose of our meeting this evening. And then our next slide is just to talk about our overlay districts. So we're talking about, we're looking at turbines within Newark and North Star. The overlay district is for both, is one of those townships. In Gracha County, it's Newark Township, North Star Township, Sumner Township, Lafayette Township, Hamilton, and Elba. But the only ones that we're talking about this evening are within the Newark and North Star Township. Then just as we look a little bit more. This just shows, this is just to show you the Newark Township. There's 27 towers that are proposed in Newark Township. But you look at that map, the red dots, all the red dots are the turbines. The big old purple line at the bottom is a transmission line. The blue lines, if you can see the blue lines, are the proposed access roads to the turbines. Orange lines, if you can see the orange lines, are the collection lines. Those are all the way. Particles are in the blue, in the light blue, and the dark black dashed line is just the property, kind of a general property area. And then the yellow outside defines the township. The green star, the green star indicates at the top, the proposed laydown area location. And then at the bottom, that green star is the proposed substation location. And so this is within our Sections 13 through 36, within Newark Township. And the next one has two, which is in, if you're at the bottom, so we're at the bottom southwest portion of North Star Township. There's two towers, and they're within the Sections of 17 to 19 and 30 to 32. And then the same, the same goes, there's two, the two red, the two turbines that are proposed at the southwestern portion of the township. So that's just going to give you a brief overview of where they're located. Our next slide. So the next step is the public hearing. So the next step, you guys, open up the public hearing. First, it will do, the applicant will do a presentation. We have PowerPoint, they're going to do a PowerPoint presentation for you. And then it'll open up for public comment. So this is a time for the public to address the comment in the Planning Commission, excuse me. Speakers need to state their name and address, and address for the record. Just facilitate orderly and productive discussion, and to give everyone opportunity to speak, we please limit, we ask people to please limit your comments to three minutes during each period. Please be respectful of the speakers and the Planning Commission. Only speak during your comment period. What will happen is we'll write down, so if the public has questions, we'll write the questions down. And then when we get done with all of the questions, then we will pass the question back, and then the applicant can answer the question. Answer the questions immediately if they're asked by the public. That's how we will vote down. And then the next steps will be done for the Commission to deliberate on the special land use permit. And of course, not the site plan, just the land use permit for this evening. And with that, you're back to you.
All right, thank you, Cindy. I appreciate it. All right, we will go ahead and open up our public hearing. It's 5:12 PM. So we'll give the floor to friend Jory. Would you like to give us your overview?
All right, well, thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. My name is Jory Fox. For those who don't know me, we work within Venergy, and we, I'm the project developer for the Heartland Farms Wind Project.
Friend, sure, another project developer of the Farm Project.
And we are here tonight to talk about special land use permit for the county for this project. Before we jump in, just wanted to mention that Venergy has been working in Gracha County for the past decade now, and we hope to continue to be a good neighbor here. And we appreciate the Planning Commission having us at all the meetings over the past year or so, and seeing us for the county board. So we hope to give you guys some good information tonight. All right. So I'll give a quick overview of the project. As I mentioned, it's called the Heartland Farms Wind Project. It would produce enough electricity to power over 35,500 American homes each year. This energy equates to 201 agawatts. The project will consist in total of 72 turbines. 27 of those proposed turbines are in Newark Township, and two are proposed for North Star Township. All of those turbines would be within the Wind Overlay District, and we've included that map up here, the same one that Cindy had shown us. So it will be in those blue areas for the Wind Overlay District. And it will also, this project includes over 100 participating families in Newark and North Star Townships alone.
So we'll get into a lot of the more specific details about the project and the site plan review, as Cindy mentions, but wanted to give a quick high level of sort of how the process starts on our side to give you a bit more context and how this all works. So really, we start with the lands. That's first and foremost what drives how these projects come together. So working with landowners, we've had landmen out here who some of you have probably met over the past three or four years, specifically working on this project. And some wind leases were actually signed within this project area as long as 10 years ago, and then are converted to work in this project. So it was really exciting for us as far as wind in Gracha County goes to sort of come full circle back to where some of the original wind leases were signed here and able to put a project together. More specifically, we start on that transmission line, sort of a central location where we'll have our substation. And then from there, the land team just spans out, and wherever people are interested in participating, having a turbine, that's what drives how this all comes together in this odd shape you're looking at as formulated. So most of the project, as Jory had mentioned, is right here in Newark Township and North Star. A combination of those two townships is 29 turbine locations. There are another 27 locations in New Haven Township, and then we have a few in North Shade, Fulton Township, and then Washington Township as well. Again, mostly driven by just where people were interested in participating in the project. Moving down to permitting, so this is our special land use permits. We will need that in all of these jurisdictions. We did receive a special land use permit and site plan approval in New Haven Township a few weeks ago. So that one has been taken care of from that perspective. We're here tonight looking for approval of a special use permit, and then we will continue the process in all of these other jurisdictions as well. Outside of the special land use permit, we are also working on a permit with EGLE for the environmental side of this project, which is discussed less here, but we do like to touch on all of the hard work our environmental team has done over the past three years. They've been out here monitoring birds and other species to ensure that our project is designed in a way that coexists and is not disruptive to the flow of species throughout this area. We do wetland delineations on every foot of collection lines and turbine foundations and everything that's put out. So you can ask any of our participating landowners. We've spent a lot of time over the past couple of years out on their properties poking around, looking at the various types of wildlife and what's growing there to make sure that we are accounting for any wetland interactions or anything like that. As far as schedule goes, we are still through the permitting process for another couple of weeks and months here. So that's really the full steam ahead on. As soon as those wrap up, we're looking to transform into construction. So construction starting this summer is our plan right now. We were aiming to have this project fully operational by the end of this year. Depending on how long this permitting takes, that could slip into the year following. But prior to any sort of construction, we do hold pre-construction meetings to make sure the townships, our participating residents, and everyone within the project area knows what's going on. So once we get through the permitting aspect, we'll really be able to much better assess what our overall project timeline looks like for construction and going operational. So we will certainly follow up once we get a better sense there and make sure everyone is understanding of what that timeline's looking like. And then the long-term structure, so this project is going to be sold to Consumers Energy. It's a build transfer, so unlike some of the previous projects, Venergy is the developer and the builder on this project. So we signed the leases, and we're going to be there, working with the landowners through and until it's operational. So through the construction period, there'll be the same faces around, the same contact information, and be able to easily reach us if they have any questions or concerns during the construction, which was something we were excited about, to be able to see it through that build and tell the switch is flipped. And then another thing we did want to highlight about this project, as it is different than some of the previous ones Venergy has developed, is that we are able to implement the ADLS system, which is the Aircraft Detection Lighting System, quickly over my head talking about, we do have a project manager here that can speak more about that if needed. But the important thing is, you know, a lot of the feedback we heard throughout the community was about flashing lights in the area. And fortunately, technology progressed to the extent where we can now just have a radar system that detects when there's an aircraft coming into the project area, and the lights will flash then. So we do expect to keep the wonderful dark skies around here most of the time, and just have those lights on for safety when an aircraft is detected in the area. And then lastly, Jory mentioned that we have over 100 participating families right in these two townships that we're here for. I did also want to highlight that throughout this project area, we have over 250 participating families that are excited and are hoping that we're able to make this project move forward.
So I'm going to touch quickly on the community benefits that are expected to come about from this project. So first and foremost is the compatibility with agriculture. The line, including the access roads and also the other infrastructure, only requires a little bit less than half an acre once it's built. So crops can be grown right up to the base and exist in, you know, harmoniously with the agricultural nature in the county. It's also consistent with the county master plan. So recently, there was some discussion at meetings about whether wind is compatible or not with these ag-zoned areas as determined by the county master plan. So we wanted to quickly clarify a couple of points here. Bear with me, I'm going to read from the master plan very briefly. One of the goals is to preserve the county's rural character. And so to achieve this goal, the following strategy was adopted as part of the plan to pursue existing funding opportunities and create incentives for large farms to utilize, maintain, and create green energy. And then the second and last example I'll use is goal number four, and the master plan references renewable energy as a way to generate and sustain economic activities. So the quote there is, "Continue to pursue alternative energy companies, market the county as an alternative energy industry." So directly in the master plan, and like I said, we believe the project will be in harmony with the agricultural nature here. On top of that, there will be job creation, so hundreds of jobs during construction, and also those new full-time or permanent jobs during the operation of the project as well. Also, there will be increased earnings and local output. So those earnings, this is for the entire project, is expected to create over 13 million in new local earnings during construction, and over 757,000 in new local long-term earnings here. And then in terms of output, when I say output, I mean with those increased earnings, they will be creating more spending within the county, so spending at local restaurants, stores, etc. That's the output stimulating the economy. So over 26 million expected in new local output during construction, and over 1.8 million in new local long-term output annually. And so what does that mean for these two townships that roll up to the county for permitting? So Newark is expected $444,000 for their own operating fund, and North Shade, $114,000, less turbines over the life of the project as well. And so then, highlight is the expected tax revenue that comes from the project. So I won't go down each of these, but one I did want to highlight is the revenue that's expected for the school districts. Again, this has been for the entire project, expected to generate over 7.9 million in total school district revenue over that life of the project. We've got others here such as the county parks, library, senior operations, drains and road. All those will see those dollars coming in as well to benefit.
All right, so we would just like to really thank everyone again for coming out here tonight. I understand that there are more members of the public that may have comments or questions in the other room as well. So we certainly look forward to hearing your questions and comments, and hope to answer as many of them here tonight as we can. Additionally, we do have an office here right next to the post office in Ithaca. You'll find Jory Fox and myself there just about every day these days. So feel free to stop by if you have other questions that you feel were not answered here tonight. Our contact information is also up on the screen here, but feel free to catch us after this meeting as well if there are other discussions you would like to have, or just other things you're curious about. But we really appreciate everyone's time coming out here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing portion. And just a reminder, please state your name and address before you begin with your comment. Also, you are limited to three minutes. Just a reminder also to step up to the podium, or anybody who's joining us virtually, I guess either speak up or raise your hand if you would like to address the Commission.
Is it, is there anyone virtually, or should I open it up to the overflow room here?
I don't see any hands, Casey, so you can start probably go back.
If anyone would like to make a public comment, you can step up. It's unmuted, so. I think we're good on public comment at this time. I'll let you know if anything else, if anyone has any concerns.
All right, thank you, Casey. I appreciate that. We have received some letters, and I would just like to read those to put those on public, public record. Also, I'll start with one. This is from a Mr. Troy Koblenz. He resides at 2250 West Grant Road, Ithaca, Michigan. He addresses the Commission as to whom it may concern, "As a resident of Newark Township, I would like to express my support of the Heartland's Farm Wind Project." Also have another one here from 4D Farms. Kim and Chris Duflo, they reside at 1445 West Garfield Road, Carrington, Michigan. "To whom it may concern, as a resident of Gracha County, I would like to express my support of the Heartland's Wind Farm Project. Chris and Kim A. Duflo support the wind tower projects based on the economic value it provides to not only the township but Gracha County as a whole. These projects support not only the roads, tax base, as well as fire and rescue. We feel with limited amount of resources the townships and the counties have, we should recommend this project to our community." Next one I have is from a Mr. Ted Bosley. He resides at 4981 South Elder Road, Ithaca, Michigan. "To whom it may concern, as a resident of Newark Township, I would like to express my support of the Heartland Farms Wind Project." I have one for Clark from Clark Toes. He resides at 4179 West Johnson Road, Ithaca, Michigan. In Clark states, "As a resident of Newark Township, I would like to express my support of the Heartland Farms Wind Project." We have one here from Judith Bosley, also resides at 4981 South Elder, Ithaca, Michigan. "As a resident of Newark Township, I would like to express my support of the Heartland Farms Wind Project." Next one I have is from Kenneth Monroe. He resides at 2798 Hayes Road, Ithaca, Michigan. He says, "As a resident of North Star Township, I would like to express my support of the Heartland's Farm Wind Project." The next one I have is from Becky Roslin. She resides at 2452 West Johnson Road, Ithaca, Michigan. "Green energy is certainly a topic we are hearing so much about. As we look around Gracha County, we see the turbines turning, assisting in renewable energy efforts. Newark Township now has the exciting chance to be part of a green energy development. As supervisor of Newark Township, I'm in support of the Heartland Wind Project. It makes sense in Gracha County's primarily rural and agricultural community. Gracha County has the land resources to make this wind farm possible, and it will bring value-added agricultural opportunities for farmers while still providing them a chance to farm land beneath the turbines. Numerous entities will benefit from the personal property tax to be captured from the turbines, including Gracha County, Gracha County Millage Service Providers, the Townships of Newark, North Star, New Haven, North Shade, Fulton, and Washington, and the school districts of Ithaca, Fulton, and Ashley. Newark Township works very hard to maintain the roads within the township, take care of three cemeteries, and provide. Take care of three cemeteries and provide fire protection to the residents among numerous other responsibilities with a very limited budget. This development opportunity will allow us to better meet our citizens' needs without levying additional millages. Thank you for your consideration and she does make herself available with an email address of BJ Rosland, R O S L U N D at gmail dot com. If you have any additional questions for. The next one I have is from a Brian Smith. I do not have an address for him, but he does state that he is the township supervisor for New Haven. Brian says, I Brian Smith and writing to you on behalf of New Haven Township as the township supervisor. I'm passing along the notification that the New Haven Planning Commission recently voted to approve the 27 turbines. From the proposed Heartland Farms project that fall within our township. It is the hope of our township and this project. That this project be approved at the county level as we believe it would be beneficial to our community. And blend well with our agricultural objectives. And one last one I have here, this is from a Mr. John Andrews. Who resides at 3075 West Pierce Road in Ithaca. He's asking that we please read me into the record of tonight's planning commission meeting. He says, I'm 100% in favor of any and all wind turbines in the six township, townships. He also owns property in Fulton Township and 100% in favor there. That's all I have for letters. Do we have anybody in Zoom or in the overflow that would like to address before I end our public comment hearing or portion?
We are all set in the overflow room.
All right, thank you, Casey. All right, thank you. All right, I will close the the public comments. Right, or portion and then for all good, I'll close the public hearing at 5:30 PM. And we can move on to Spicer's report. All right.
All right, thank you. I will leave your property report for us, just a written report going into a little bit more detail. The documents, uh, review the documents that we have. And the report we have a. You'll see as we go through. We'll go through the chapters and talk real briefly about what the report has, just to kind of give you a brief. And at the end of each of these chapters. Conditions and things. So that's, that's what we have in front of you. So first, we're going to start with the general chapter 16, this is the one through four, which is your basis of. And your standards. So the first is the planning commission shall approve special land use only upon compliance with each of the following standards. The special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated and maintained in a manner harmonious with the. Character of adjacent property and the surrounding area. Special land use shall not change the nature of the surrounding area. The special land use shall be harmonious to adjacent property. Or involve use activities, materials or equipment. Oh, excuse me, shall not be hazardous, be hazardous to adjacent property. Or involve uses activities, material or equipment. That will be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of persons or properties through the creation of hazard. Hazardous or potentially hazardous situations for the excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, dust, fumes or glare. And the special land use shall not place demands on public services, on facilities in excess that are current capacity. And so the next within our specified standards for a special land use are the conditions. The planning commission may impose conditions with the approval of a special land use that are necessary. To ensure compliance with the standards for approval stated in this section and. Standards that are stated within within our ordinance. And then perhaps within this is any infractions. If after the establishment of a special land use. The approved use is found to be a non-compliance, it shall be corrected within 60 days. If it's not corrected within 60 days. Then this provision 16.5 of ordinance where basically. That's just, just to kind of use that here where land uses can be looking at. Then the next is our zoning ordinance, chapter 16, section 7 double P, division standards and regulations for the special land use. Gone through each of these and we've looked at all the applications in the submitted. And and just briefly have gone over and and written here in the presentation. What we have found or if we haven't. The first two are the 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 intent, there's no action required by the applicant. The zoning, the project is located within the overlay district, so the project is within the overlay district for the ordinance. The 67 double P to be principal or secondary, there's no action that's. The overlays, we do all of that also through the site plan review. On that during site plan review and the same with the applicability that's under review. Certifications for 16.7 certifications, so these are things that we would need post construction certifications. That the project complies with codes, industry practices and I'll provide. They will provide as-built sheet files and electronic files so that you have it on file here. And then the tower is certified and drawings are stamped. Those are things that will be looking for post construction of the project. So our next chapter then, chapter 16, 7.75 inspections. This will happen annually, will provide annual maintenance inspections and records updated. Contact and the information that the county will have on record. For decommissioning. Prior to construction, the applicant and the county board will enter into a mutually agreeable decommissioning agreement that outlines the specific decommissioning requirements. And requirements that post and maintain financial instruments, excuse me, the applicant will post and maintain a financial instrument in compliance with the zoning ordinance. And applicable to the county to decommissioning projects if it's necessary. Initially, the salvage cost is not, the cost is not salvage, excuse me. And so the placement of a turbine right now is at 156,842 and $42. As we discussed earlier, there are 27 turbines in township and two turbines in North Star. Just as a brief summary then for that. As a brief summary, that certifications are going to be post-construction, inspections will be annually. And then the decommission is things that will happen prior to construction. That's just to kind of use that section. Next is our section, chapter 14. Section 4, condition standards and regulations for the special land use within our ordinance. For 14.4, applicant will site plan. Review and we're reporting back on that. The company contact information was all included, the narrative was all included for that section, section 4.4E. Site plan documentation, site plan documentation was provided. There might be some additional information that will come into site plan review as we as we look through the documents. Detailed drawings were provided for the towers and the foundations, those were all provided for us to look at for the site plan. Construction schedule, the proposed construction schedule that is in the application has a construction beginning in early 2022. And a commercial operation ended to late 2022 and I know Chris can talk about that a little bit. Section 14.4, lesser acknowledgement letter. The prior to construction, we need to be finalized with legal. Thank you. All right. So our next is. The performance bond, so prior to construction, this is also prior to construction. Performance bond or equivalent financial instrument for decommissioning, the bond shall be in the favor of the county. And should be an amount of at least a million dollars and shall contain a rebellishment obligation, obligation. Application materials, 14.4E application materials, the applicant addresses the standards. And has said that they will comply with all the applicable laws and rules and provide the county with copies of all permits prior to construction. Visual appearance is the responsibility of the applicant to have, take care of the visual appearance and maintenance for the life of the project. And section 14.4 for the lighting. I believe the applicant spoke this a little bit in reference to prior to construction. The applicant will need to comply with the minimum requirements for the FAA lighting standards, but then we also talked about the. The ADLS, the aircraft detection devices and they will need to keep the county up to date as they make their application. On a monthly basis to let you know what's going on with that application and if that, and if. They they will end up, if it's constructed, they will then need to update the towers in order to comply with the ADLS. And they and they have. Heard on all of the above and then if you have questions on that, I'm sure they would be a better source of some of that information. But that's the general, the general overview of that. Advertising on section 14 for the, there will be no display of advertising on the towers. Towers aside from just this reasonable identification. The electrical collection lines prior to construction will comply with all local, state, national. In reference to our setbacks, we had two setbacks up here and just the way it reads within our ordinance, the setback for A. All of our setbacks will happen at site time review and we'll present each turbine to you and walk me through each turbine with all of the setbacks. And how they, and how they work and how they, and how it falls and how the setbacks work with these turbines. This, this particular one talks about occupied buildings and then the, then we'll put the shadow flicker. The applicant has provided a shadow flicker study. We will review that in in detail for each of those turbines and then we'll report back on that if there's any curtailment that needs to happen. And then the same with the last setbacks, the setbacks for the site plan review that it will include like property line boundaries. Public roads and those are things that we'll all be looking at in review. Certifications, so post-construction, the applicant will certify all construction has, was completed in compliance with. Permit and shall submit as-built drawings. Prior to construction, the tower height, the applicant shall provide determination of no hazard from the FAA. Noise, noise will be site plan, site plan review, we will be reviewing noise. To make sure that our decibels, our 55 decibels. And building are met. Middle ground clearance, the proposed turbines do meet all middle ground requirements. Middle ground requirements, signal interference 14.4.8. Prior to site plan review, the applicant shall submit a comm search report which includes a review of the proposed turbine locations to indicate any. Interference issues with the proposed layout. Post-construction, the owner will be required to mitigate any issues that are related to sync signal interference. So those are things that we will need to look at. Safety, for the life of the project, the applicant. In the case of they will be in compliance with all the safety requirements. Transportation plan prior to construction. Will provide, the applicant will be providing a. Compliance with the Grashaw County Road Commission. And then with the with the submitted, there was an application fee that was included. We were going to have the. Site plans included, excuse me. Return whether the. Prior to site plan review. Oh, hang on, I missed a page, I was wondering what I was looking at there. All right, there we go, all right, so that is just your, that is a, all of the ordinance, all of the compliances that we just looked at. This just goes through and lists. And we have things that we will need. Either prior to site plan review, prior to construction, that will be for the life of the project, these are things that. Be need to be considered by the planning commission. As you look at your, through your deliberation. Section, chapter 14, section 4C, this is your site plan review, just your general site plan review standards. It are for all of your site plans when you have a site plan that is presented in front of the planning commission. Part of site plan review, site plans will be updated to include the requirements for this section. The planning commission can make a finding determining what certain information may or may not be required because of the. Because of this particular type of use. Also then, prior to site plan review, additional graphic or written materials can be requested. For the site plan, for appropriateness for the site plans and what we'll do is that if we are looking at something during the site plan process, I won't need an image or picture of it. The applicant, unless the applicant to provide it for us, so if we step back to you, we'll be able to present that additional site information. And then this is the final summary on that is the. Once again, prior to site plan review, the the applicant will need to possibly update some additional information for us on the site plans to be in compliance with our ordinance. Okay, and just the next one, Heather. So additional, additional. Information to be considered for the, for the planning commission, so. Transfer, any approval granted to the applicant is transferable to a successor or assignee. Access roads and collection roads during and prior or during construction alterations of access roads and underground electrical collection systems. Within participating properties will be allowed pursuant to the landowner's permission. Applicable permits and setbacks, I'll be per our ordinance 14.4, 14.6. Lay down areas will need a fire in the site plan, will need to have a full set of site plan, a full set of plans to show us where the lay down area is. And all the details that go along with the site plan for the lay down area and then the same for the substation. Full set of site plans that will show the final. Location and the configuration of the substation will need that prior to site plan review. Once again, the ADLS towers, the applicant will submit details and site plans related to the proposed ADLS towers. Upon approvals by the FAA, the applicant will install two towers of approximately 100. Feet in height as specified in the application. And then they must have provided approval documentation from the FAA and they will, they'll be updating you on a, on a monthly basis. Also things to consider is the drain agreement prior to issuance of the zoning permit. They need to enter into a drain agreement with the Grashaw County Drain Commission or for use of the impacts of the county drains. Complete resolution, supplement information includes that we received prior to construction. A supplement, a complete resolution process will be finalized. Also, the continuing ordinance enforcement escrow, so prior to construction, the applicant shall posit. What's that? Oh. Okay, prior to. Okay, prior to, prior to construction, prior to construction, the applicant shall deposit funds in an escrow account maintained by the county in a reasonable amount deemed sufficient by the county to be used towards reasonably ensuring that the applicant of the project meets, meets the all requirements imposed by the zoning ordinance. And then lastly is the construction sound and sound flicker, excuse me, construction sound and shadow flicker studies. So post-construction, county will be provided studies showing that the project as constructed adheres to all sound and shadow flicker requirements in the zoning ordinance. And then lastly is just a summary, summary of the last group of our other considerations, which includes the transfer of, the transfer with a three-day notification, access roads and collection lines be prior to or during construction, lay down, we need a site plan review, prior to site plan review, and also substation, we need site plans prior to site plan review. We need ADLs towers, submit details and site plans, drain agreement prior to construction, complaint resolution prior to construction, continuing ordinance enforcement also prior to construction, and then construction sound and shadowing would be post-construction flicker studies that would, that would end up happening. That is a very quick overview and a lot of me reading of the packet that you have. I think at this time, it's up to the, the commission to deliberate. If you have any questions, if you have any additional questions of us, if you have additional questions of the applicant on the submittal, on the condition.
I think, I think that would be appropriate. And then if you are done deliberating, we, our office did prepare a resolution that would incorporate the regulations within Spicer's. I would be more than happy to summarize. A lot of, you did a lot of listening, but I would be happy to summarize the provisions of this, answer any questions about it. Anything that might want me to do. One thing I would note is, I believe I, I set a copy of the resolution in front of all of your chairs there. The one, there is a, two or three very minor changes from what was, all of you. So I would like to, if we get to the resolution, I would like to identify them for you.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments for Fred or Jory or Spicer or even any professionals that may be here today? I know we have a few. Could you just maybe name off who we have, just in case somebody has questions on shadow flicker or?
Never touched on shadow flicker.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Jim Tutter. I'm an area manager with ITC. We want to maintain all the high voltage lines throughout the lower peninsula and we're working with Invenergy to interconnect them to the existing transmission grid that runs through the area.
All right, great, thank you.
And I'll be, I'll be joining Invenergy for the site plan approval process as well. Be prepared to share you details about the substation at that time.
All right, thank you very much.
We also have a couple of other subject matter experts here tonight. So we've got experts on sound, shadow flicker, property values, and our construction manager as well as our lead team. Please let us know if you have any specific questions, we're happy to address.
All right, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Of course I would, right? So I just have a, the first question is, let's say one of the areas decides not to approve this. Now, let's say this planning commission does and one other place. What happens then? Is the whole project done? Is, is, I mean, I am just curious, how much is holden to each of these?
Yeah. Want me to step up?
Yeah, if you could, just in case they are having issues hearing, sure.
That's a great question. We've gotten that before. So, you know, the way Invenergy would like to think about this is we've been working with various township officials for quite some time now and we have been abiding by the township and the county wind ordinances. And because of that, you know, we, we hope that because we've met those requirements and will meet those requirements in the future, we would expect to see approval in those jurisdictions since we've done our due diligence and checked our boxes. I will say that, you know, the, the project size that we are targeting includes all turbines in all those townships. And that's based off of a demand in this area for energy. So we do expect that we will be building those, those 72.
Since I'm on a roll. I know I read it somewhere, but what is the life expectancy of each windmill? And does that go along with the way that you, I can't remember the, the word, the IRS allows you to?
Appreciate.
Thank you. That was the word I couldn't think of, depreciate. So do those two mesh or is it, is it, is that a different, is that a different thing?
Fred Short from Invenergy here. So that is different, although correlated, I am sure. We using Invenergy are not the ones that provide those depreciation tables. We do expect the useful life of the turbines to be up to 40 years. With the new technology, that's sort of where they're at. But they are not directly correlated to those depreciation tables.
Okay, don't leave. Because the special land use goes with the property and you guys are building the turbines, but then consumers is going to take over. Let's say somebody else takes over. What happens with that decommissioning bond? How does that work? Is that, is that based on you guys? Yeah, so?
She doesn't trust my answer.
I just wanted to step in for a second. We're having a really hard time hearing you guys up in the overflow room. I think there's like a lot of papers rustling around. It's picking up and so it's coming in and out. So I think if you could speak up and just try to limit the paper rustling. Yeah, sorry.
Do you want us to, do you want Alquinn to repeat her last question?
Yes, I don't think we got pretty much anything that Alquinn.
Okay, I was saying, because the special land use goes with the property and not with just a specific project, once this gets turned over to consumers and then potentially it could be turned over to somebody else, how is the decommissioning bond handled?
Great question. So the, the decommissioning bond will be transferred with the ownership of the project. Simple answer, what we agreed to with you will be transferred over to consumers and they will then own the same decommissioning bonds. And that decommissioning bond will be reevaluated for inflation every five years or so as another added benefit.
So I'm Bill Thady, county's legal counsel. What we've seen happen in past situations like this, and, and I'm not sure if they're planning on doing it differently this time, but typically what we've seen is that when the new owner comes in, they want to bring their own bond, right? They may have their own bonding companies, that's another, I've seen that happen in the past. And if that does happen, then in return for the new bond, the county would basically return the old bond. Seen this happen time and time again. You know, there always will be a valid bond in place. Won't ever have a situation where you don't have that insurance.
And then I just have one last question, and actually this is for Spicer. On your information that you sent to us, and it shows the rated capacity and the rotor diameter, the, the very bottom, it says overall height and you have the GE 2.82-127 at 12, 152.1 meters and that's 499 feet. Then you have the GE 252-127 at 125 meters, but that's also 499 feet. And I just wondered if you're going to have, are they actually both going to be 499 feet and one of those is a typo or? Because 152.1 meters is different than 125.1 meters, but you have them showing both at 499 feet. So I just wondered if we're having two different sizes or not having two different sizes?
We are not having two different sizes. I mean, they are both very much 499 feet. So that's just, I'm going to say that that's a typo.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to ask that, so. Those are the only questions I had. Thank you.
Love Quinn.
Good, good you noticed.
All right, any other questions? Now's the time to ask, we've got everybody here that?
Well, I have a question on, I don't, in the resolution, and I don't know if that's the appropriate place for it or not, but they need to strengthen the repairing of the field tile going through all of this agricultural ground. It's pretty weak, there's not much set on it. It needs to be, for your township supervisors, you need to tighten that up.
So which place are you referencing here in the, in the resolution?
It's not anybody.
Oh, okay. Oh, so you're, you want it to be an addition too?
Well, no, I'm not going to change the resolution. It might be in the site plan or something, but it's, just something needs to be addressed.
Okay. And can we know what the two different changes were from the resolution that we got tonight versus the resolution that we studied?
Absolutely. So the first change would start, if you go to page four, under 2B. This condition requires a site plan, a complete site plan before site plan review. There's other components of this project other than turbines, so the lay down yard and the substation. And typically Spicer would review more or less a site plan, kind of zoomed in on that parcel. So it's requiring those. For the ADLs site plan, it is my understanding that the ADLs, the towers, that would occur after Invenergy or the applicant would receive a permit from the FAA. And it's not, meaning it's not practical to review that site plan until they have an FAA permit. So it would be the intent of you, the intent of it would be you'd review all the site plans for all the components outside of the ADLs and then they would come back with the ADLs, which I believe will have, they're saying one or two radar towers.
So what you're looking for would be a conditional approval upon what the ADLs brought back as their recommendation?
It would be a conditional approval based on them submitting a site plan and getting it approved for the ADLs.
Okay.
Okay, so that is the first one. That, I think in the original, it more or less said that, but we did add some parenthetical language to be, unless otherwise stated below, such as for the ADLs site plan, to show that they don't need to come, when they're coming with a complete site plan, that if Spicer's reviews for site plan review, they don't need to have the ADLs. Going on to the next change, that would be going to seven, under lighting and aircraft detection lighting system, page seven, thing J. At the very end, there's language talking about the applicant may install one or two ADLs radar towers subject to site plan reviews, like we just talked about, of approximately 25 meters in height. They shall be located on participating parcels and essentially comply with all zoning ordinance requirements. That was another change. And then the last one, so there's three substantive changes, is go to K, the Spicer report, comments we received on Spicer's report is during site, site plan review because the applicant may decide to, they have alternate, and you can ask for this, they have alternate turbine sites. They may not have more or less the, they may change the configuration slightly by not using alternates or deciding to build one turbine, not the other. So this says, and before it used to say they would provide, provide a final detailed mitigation and curtailment plan for the shadow flicker. Now it's saying at site plan review, they provide a preliminary plan that shows how they're doing it with the, all the ones, including the ones, you know, if they're an alternate. And then after, prior to construction, they would submit their final plan predicated on all the final turbine locations. So it'd still give Spicer, in my opinion, enough information to analyze the shadow flicker because that's very important with the preliminary plan. But then it also puts the burden on the applicant when they get final turbine locations, that, you know, let's say they don't build, they have to, they have to finalize that plan, have to update it with the final location.
And those final locations would be approved by our zoning administrator and not necessarily our board. We're going to approve site plans.
Going to approve the site plans. And that's a very good question and actually something that, you know, we did get comments on, on the Spicer's report and also our resolution. So one thing to think about, especially for site plan, and this is a good segue for the, the planning commission to think about this now and potentially address that site plan review, is when you go to page nine, condition talks about project movements or previous projects, because sometimes the turbines can shift locations based on construction realities, that's what it has been explained to me. Previous projects have allowed movements of 100 feet with just zoning administrator approval and not coming back to you for site plan approval. So the zoning administrator would, and presumably Spicer would ensure that they meet all the standards of the zoning ordinance if they have to make a slight move. And then the zoning administrator would do that if it's less than 100 feet rather than all of you. I, right now, I have the language general, it has to follow the zoning ordinance, but I, I would like to speak to the zoning administrator to see if you're comfortable and also get feedback from you if you're comfortable with that process that you've used in prior projects. If I can give you an example, Polaris site plan resolution had that language in it.
Yes, I remember that.
Can I just go back quickly to the one where you, the J that you said was changed? And you said that you were going to install one or two of the radar towers?
So the applicant may install one or two of the radar towers.
Will that be on the site plan if, okay, I just wanted to?
Yes, absolutely. The site plan has to show all the improvement.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that that's one of those extra components that we might be looking for.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the resolution?
You have a corrected resolution from chairman?
Yes, I handed out the corrected resolution to all of you.
Does anybody have any questions? All right, does anybody have any questions? I think if it's? Right, does anybody have any questions or anything before we move on? Are we going to entertain a motion to approve this resolution tonight while we're all here? What are your thoughts, I guess?
Is, is, are we just approving the resolution? Is that what we're looking at tonight?
We will circle back once all the site plan reviews have been completed. We'll circle back and set a next meeting date for that so we can then sit down and go, eat, go through each one and make sure that we're good to go. So by approving this resolution tonight, we're just allowing the project to move forward so that they can, you know, they're? So by approving this resolution tonight, we're just allowing the project to move forward so that they can, you know, there.
It's a noise issue. They're going to do something on the blades, going to make it quieter supposedly. I have it from a couple of people that had it on their turbines retrofitted to that, said it was supposed to make it quiet and it made it on the air study or the sound study, it only made a difference of two decimals. Not a big factor.
All right. If you would like a motion, Carla, I would make a motion that we accept the resolution, the new resolution as presented tonight with the new language.
By Al, and by Janelle that we adopt and pass the amended resolution for the Gresh County Planning Commission approving the Heartland Farms Wind Project, a special land use permit, a resolution number 2022 dash and something.
What number you're on, so you can put anything you want there.
01. All right, all in favor?
Discussion on the issue, discussion after a second.
Okay.
I have, I think you should know this, you, all these people here approved the Polaris project, and this is a sound study that was done on the Polaris project. I don't know where my voice has gone. But this is the third stop, sound study on this particular project, and this is going to be no different in the future. Okay, it's where we are. And on, on Well, that's right. And it's got it here that in this one month, this period of time, September 17th is September 23rd. I can, I could count it about, with a, I can see it because it just barely printed it on there, but there's about 30 times it went over the 55 decimals. Averaging closer to 60, 65. I have another one here on September, and I didn't count that one. There's one in October. This is what I'm, this is what I'm showing you right here. See that? That's 55. That's above 55. You see that? A line is 55. All these black lines are above it. These are the turbines running, these are the wind speeds and all the monkey business going on. And it's printed so fine, you hardly even read it, but it's there anyway. You folks have to know this because people are driving them crazy. Sound going over the limit. And there is a limit and we've exceeded it. I don't think our ordinances are, we started out with a little bitty, we started out with a little bitty project down here. BB Wind Farm, BB Wind Farm down here. And we've doubled and supersized these things. We went from, to give you an idea, that foundation was 250 yards, now they're 500 yards. They're about the same height. The blades are twice as big. So they literally supersize everything, the sound, the shadow, everything is bigger. Okay? And we need, if we're going to keep doing wind farms in Gresh County, we need to protect our landowners. The money's good. I'll admit the money's good. I've got one. And I'm speaking from my own experience. That's what I said about the field tile. You need to fix it. Make them fix a field tile a little bit better. Guys I had did a terrible job. But these things are getting bigger and we need to increase the distances from the houses. Because it sounds like a jet. Mine sounds like a jet airplane, low flying jet. Doesn't sound like a refrigerator. That ship has sailed. And that's, I have a pretty strong feeling about this. And I, like I said, I am an owner of a turbine or I have one on my property. I'm speaking from experience. So that's what you need to think of. You approve this, we've got people that are desperate to get out of their houses because they can't sleep in them. So there is a noise issue. They've addressed it. They turned it, they said, they didn't tell us that they turned the blades down slower. There is a system in there. I, what is that called? Norm or something like that. If you got one, you got one turbine that had T105 as a, has a reduced system in it for sound because it's too close to the guy's house, right?
And our own modes is that.
Yeah, it is. It is. It's in here somewhere. And it's in this book. So that's I realize we have a lot of support, but I'm just cautioning you, you're going to have problems. You're going to have problems because of the noise and of the turbines. So I'm done.
Chair, would you like me to, I can, I think there's a point I would like to make from this, this resolution that may address the commissioner, the commissioner's concern. So if you look at page eight R, this resolution has something about continuing ordinance enforcement escrow requirement.
Yeah, that's, that's something new, isn't it?
Yes. And what it would essentially entail is if there are complaints of ordinance noncompliance, such as noise.
Right.
There would be a fund maintained by the county of applicant.
And all that. I read all that. I said, that's just new. I don't think we had that before.
It's, it's, it's a relatively new concept and I think it's safeguard.
Yeah, there wasn't a vehicle before. That's good. Thank you.
Right. Oh.
Any more discussion?
So we had a motion by Al Quinn, supported by Janelle, to approve the resolution. But what if I could take a roll call vote? And jot that down. Caroline? David?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
And now?
Yes.
Carla?
Yes.
Mark?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, why are you abstaining?
I don't think we're in compliance.
Spicer just reviewed that though.
They just say it's, I'm saying it's not.
Okay. All right, and Al Quinn? All right. Motion passes and we have adopted the resolution for the Heartland Wind Farm. So I guess our next business is going to be set that next week for those site plan review.
When, when is the next meeting?
So we typically meet the second Wednesday of every month. So that's going to put us in, goodness, let me see here. The 12th, excuse me, 13th.
Remember, so you do not have my calendar. For me, simply for people to be looking at their phones because I know they can see my calendar too.
Would 5:00 PM be okay?
Yes.
So we will schedule our site plan review for our regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, the 13th of April at 5:00 PM. All right. Don't have anything else. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn. Go ahead and adjourn. Caroline, motion by Janelle, supported by Caroline, that we adjourn at 21:00 PM. All in favor? Post the same.